All right. Good evening. It is 4:30. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Dr. Midsick, has this meeting been posted?
Yes, it has.
And roll call will show that four members are present and Member Grogan is running a little late. She should be here. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We will start tonight with comments and questions from visitors. And seeing none, we will just go right into our first action item, which is the approval of the preliminary budget for the 2023-24 school year. Dr. Midsick or Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, we've been discussing this budget since, well, we approved the last budget in the end of 2023. But we've had some more recent updates in April and May. And so this is the final preliminary budget approval before it turns into the annual meeting presentation and is given to the community for a vote on whether or not to ask you to approve it at the October meeting. So this is our preliminary budget approval. Normally, we would do this at the second meeting in June, but decided to do it at the special meeting, partially because we have some new information on funding from the state and what that looks like. So we're going to use the time this evening in advance of the retreat to walk through the preliminary budget and ask for your approval.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mitchell.
All right. So there was a presentation that was included. So I'm going to walk through that and we'll cover tech support here this evening for that. So if we need to go back and forth, I'll just have to adjust the cameras for the audience and the recording. So agenda, we want to update the preliminary budget, talk about budget and tax levy, and then next steps. And when we're talking about the budget, our goals, we want this to be a reflection of how we're allocating limited resources, time and financial resources towards our priority areas. We're making sure that what we're investing those resources in is making a difference for kids. And we want to demonstrate that we're being good stewards of our financial resources to our school community and our Greendale village at large. And so this is what it's about. How are we delivering resources so that that educational experience is impactful for every student that we serve? And so we've talked to the board about the process that we've gone through for needs identification and how we're building the budget. We set a list of budgetary principles that's agreed upon. So the board, administration, our whole admin team, and our citizen finance team has discussed and helped to refine those budgetary principles. And so you see some of those that are listed of the 10. Five of those that are listed here, we're thinking about being positive and putting students first. We're utilizing data to drive what we're investing in. We're thinking about how we meet curriculum needs of our school district, making sure there's opportunities for programming for all students and certainly possibilities thinking. So how can we deliver programming that kids need in a different way within the resources that we have available? Also, within those budgetary principles are class size targets. So whenever possible, we are working as an administrative team to meet a staffing model that reflects those class size targets. So at 4K and 5K, class sizes of 18 to 22 students. At first through third grade, 20 to 24 students. At fourth and fifth grade, 23 to 28 students. And then at the middle school level, a range up to 26 to 30. And at the high school level, 25 to 30. And so that impacts how we build the staffing model each year.
Can I ask a quick question about that? So our staffing model is based on these numbers?
Joe, if you want to turn on your microphone.
So these, our staffing model, our budget is based on these numbers. Do we know where we are at with some of the class sizes? And I know, you know, we were kind of in the process of registration. And typically, we pick up some kids, we lose some kids during the summer. Do we know, are there certain areas that we're hitting up against these ranges? And I just, the reason I ask is, in the past, we've had some flexibility with, you know, we're getting close. Maybe we add a teacher, you know, we're getting close, maybe we split classes. But I'm wondering if we're at a point where if we get close, we don't have flexibility to add a classroom or add a teacher?
If you're referring to elementary?
Yes.
We have one grade level at one school that is pushing up against the top end of the target. We actually have a different grade level at another school that we could potentially contract because of lost enrollment. So it's currently posted for three sections or planned for three sections, but the number of students make it so that we may be able to go back to two sections. So we don't have a lot of flexibility. However, the way it's lining up right now, we have one class that's pushing up against the top end and one class that's so low that we could probably contract because we have not opened seats there yet. It's not in alignment with our projections. We lost more students than expected.
So, and then if you just want more color to that, of the seats that the board approved for open enrollment, about two-thirds of those have been filled at this point. And 90% of what we anticipated filling, we didn't count on every single one of them for budget planning purposes. 90% of what we need to meet budget has been filled so far in June. So we're right on track in terms of budget. And that fits within, those seats that were approved fit within this target class size model. So the goal there is to fill in seats when we're actually below those target class size minimums. So if you've got a range at first grade and you're below 20 per section, you're filling up with the intention to just hit that bottom end of the scale at 20.
Thank you.
Makes sense. Thank you.
So total FTE by building, so this would include instructional staff to hit those class size targets, including all of our other support staff. As we have total FTE of 343 and a half, and that covers the whole district.
Can I just emphasize what you just said? That's all staff, not teachers?
Correct.
It's all staff. Okay.
Correct. That includes professionals, support staff. And what was that number, three?
Yeah, can you go back to that slide?
For sure. 343.
I'm surprised that Canterbury has more people than College Park on staff there. It just is the building's smaller, right?
They have three classes per grade.
Oh, no, those are, I thought you said those are FTEs.
FT, total FTE by building.
Oh, you're just saying enrollment is big, right, Canterbury? So that's why there's more FTEs?
That would be the main reason, yes. You're going to be about 100 students more in total between those two grades, those two buildings.
Oh, interesting. Okay.
And Highland View includes time for learning, which is why.
That's so much bigger, yeah.
Okay. Investments that we're making within the preliminary budget. So projects that we've talked about previously with the board, middle school wood shop. So that was targeted through our facility prioritization model for HVAC upgrades and replacement of the dust collector unit so that for instructional purposes, it's much more functional for the programming that they have there. So we're looking forward to that being completed before the start of the fall semester. At College Park, investment of ESSER stimulus funds on HVAC controls and removing pneumatic controls that currently exist and going to digital controls. Middle school invests in some repairs to the concrete walkway and improving ADA access at that campus. K-8 reset programming. So we're going through the process of designing renovations that we have a permanent home for that K-8 reset program that is currently in the high school dance room. And that will have long-term savings for the district by cost avoidance for students that might otherwise have tuition costs outside of the district. That could be $70,000 to $100,000 per student per year or more. But for many reasons, educationally appropriate if we can provide it here locally. And that's something that Ms. Ledesma has talked about at prayer meetings. And then the CKLA, the K-5 English Language Curriculum Adoption, and the investment there. So then that revenue allocation, this is a chart that we have shared in the past. The state legislature prior indexing method that had been used for 10 years prior to 2008, 2009, when there was a state budget crisis that was put on pause. And in the 1112 year, there was actually a negative $554 in spendable revenue limit. And since that time, the annual increases have not caught up to that prior indexing measure. And so the difference on a per student basis over time has come to over $3,200. And that impacts what we have for flexibility in providing programming. So here you see that chart. The darker line there showing that steady increase if the legislature had continued to index. And then the blue line, the actual amount. And so that's a challenge that we have as a team, is figuring out how to provide the best programming that we can within those limited revenues, knowing that that gap exists.
So Jonathan, just from a simplistic point of view, the state determines how much we can spend on revenue or how much, how much we as a district can spend. There are limits to what we can spend. And then the state says if you want to spend outside of that or above that, then you need to ask your village for, whether or not they approve of that.
Correct.
You go to referendum. In other words, going to referendum.
Though, yes, if you wanted to catch up to that indexing method, because that authority is not given by the state, the community could choose to increase that actual line to what number is needed for programming.
Thanks, Jonathan.
Yep. And so with that limited authority, the state of Wisconsin spent 48th out of 50 states. And the percentage increase in per student spending over an 18-year period. And as a result of that, has dropped in overall spending from 11th to 25th. And that's prior to the current two-year spending freeze that goes through the biennium that ends here in June of 2023. And then for context, we know that inflationary costs are catching up to all businesses and all public entities, including schools in Wisconsin. And so the inflationary rate that is used with the Wisconsin Employment Relations Commission is increasing from 4.7%, which is a very high number in the context of the last 20 years and almost doubling to 8% for the 2023-24 school year. So represented unions have the ability to bargain base wages up to that increased number at 8%. And that's based on the March Consumer Price Index figure. So we've talked with the board before that there's these pressures. We're thinking about academic recovery of our students and the impact of programming through COVID and trying to provide programming in an urgent manner to meet the needs that kids have now, to ensure that they recover academically and that we continue to perform at the level that our community expects. There's investments that need to be made now in order to ensure that that's happening in our schools. And then we have two years of a revenue freeze in the last biennium budget and then the inflationary cost pressures. And so we shared a slide at the meeting on June 16th and want to bring back that slide for the conversation tonight because we've found out through the budget bill what that anticipated increase is. And it is $325 in spendable per student revenue in each two, of the two years of the biennium. And $325 versus our overall spendable cap of revenue limit and per pupil aids, just under 2.7%. So we think about that in the context of the earlier slides of inflationary costs and academic investment. And that revenue, spendable revenue increase is at 2.7%. So this is a comparison chart that shows some of those funding levels for other educational programming, what was included in the state budget. So for K-8 vouchers, the percentage increase was 18.6% or $1,562 in spendable revenue for next year. For grades nine through 12 vouchers, $3,410 or 37.7%. And then for open enrollment students, $412 or 5.01%. And so those increases compared against what the school board advocated for and had conversations with the legislature about, of a $1,510 increase to catch up for the revenue freeze in the last biennium budget. For next year, that would have been a 9.1% increase or $1,107 of that 1510. And so that 9.1 compares, it fits in the middle in terms of the voucher increases and what was approved for open enrollment and the actual increase. So the actual joint finance proposal of 2.67% is less than a third of what the board was advocating for, for next year. And so that creates a shortfall in terms of revenues for the programming that we want to invest in. A lot of numbers on the table, so any questions on that?
I just, I didn't catch the news today. I know that the assembly, the budget went to the assembly today. Do we have any updates on whether this budget was passed or vetoed by Governor Evers yet?
So what was up for discussion today was a package for utilizing additional dollars to put into the school levy tax credit. And so we will get information shortly. I'm sure we can check in before the board work session here this evening to see what the vote came in at. But that was not anticipated to change spendable revenues. That was anticipated to give us additional information on tax, tax levy credits that were going to come through that would not be new spendable money, but would offset overall taxes in the state.
So the experts are expecting these numbers to be firm?
Yes.
No matter what?
Yes.
Okay.
We've talked with the board before that that $12,166 is made up from two sources of revenue. Well, there's a lot more sources of revenue, but those are the two sources of revenue with the state within, that is accounted for by taxpayers. And that is the state allocates funds and the local tax levy allocates funds. And so no matter if they add more money to the state budget, it just means that there's less tax at the property value level. And if they give less money from the state level, there's more money from the local property tax. But between those two buckets, they can't exceed that. So if they talk about adding to the state bucket, it means subtracting from the local property tax bucket, not increasing the amount we can actually spend on students.
So when they add money to the voucher program that is local, does that mean that that's part of the property tax bill that people see?
Correct.
Is that money that Greendale Schools gets to spend?
No. We have talked, we've also shared that at our annual meeting in the budget presentation and a couple of other occasions. The voucher costs are a pass-through tax. So the vouchers go to the schools that, where the students are attending, but it is taxed directly on top of what is already taxed for public schools on the local property tax bill. And so we had approximately 3% last year spent, collected from taxpayers to go directly to vouchers.
I, I'm confused though, how? I thought all this money was coming from the surplus. Why would it be adding on to the property taxes?
Jonathan, are you looking for something?
I mean, there was a $7.2 billion surplus. Why would the increase in voucher and private school spending be passed on to taxpayers?
So those were approved through separate legislation? So that's why there's an order that additional spending was approved without some tax levy offset. And so there was anticipation that that could increase taxes. And I think the philosophy is, is that the additional legislation that's being discussed now would funnel funds separately. They wouldn't actually go into the schools, but would go through the school levy tax credit as an overall offset. And so to your point of utilizing funds that are within the current state surplus, that that flexibility exists. And so that's what's being discussed. But for reasons that these were being discussed as separate negotiated components, one came before the other. That's my general understanding of the budget process.
I mean, they're advertising a $3.5 billion reduction in taxes in general. So, you know, I guess I, obviously I didn't follow the budget as closely, line by line, as you probably did. But it's, I'm trying to understand how taxpayers are going to get a $3.5 billion in relief, but then they're also going to have to pay for the increase of the voucher private schools. Is that what I hear you saying or?
It, it depends on how you're looking at a tax bill, right? And so that's where it can be complex. Because on a one, one line item of your tax bill, that voucher is going to show up through the school tax levy. But on a separate spot on your, on your tax bill, you may see school tax levy credit where the state legislature has invested additional funds. And with the idea that those two things are going to offset. But given that that portion's in discussion today for a vote, I wouldn't have hard numbers to show you like what's going to happen to a Greendale tax bill. But from listening to the committee discussions on this, that's the intention, was there was additional authority, particularly what we see in increased spendable revenue for vouchers. And to offset the impact locally of taxes is what's being discussed now is a tax levy credit. It's just not going to flow through the same taxing mechanism. So for a local public school, school board, it's going to look like overall taxes are going up to provide programming when somewhere else, a different line on that bill. And we can look at that later as a board. Somewhere else on that bill is the offset to cover that additional voucher cost.
And then offset is what is returned to the taxpayers.
Yes.
School levy tax credit is, is just tax reduction.
So there's the, the debate or the question, is that really funding schools or is that taxpayer relief? Because that credit doesn't fund schools at all. It's.
The limit on how much can be spent is unchanged. It's how it's, how it is taxed to the taxpayer through property taxes or income taxes. And I don't know how much of that $3.5 billion cut is property tax relief and how much of that $3.5 million, billion dollar cut in taxes is income tax relief. But there, there is an effort to use the surplus to bring down taxes.
Yeah. I think it should be noted to, I mean, to most people, obviously, when we look at percentages, the private vouchers, private schools and voucher schools got a much bigger increase percentage-wise. But when you look at how much we're spending to educate a student, here in Greendale, we're spending $12,166. The voucher schools, K-8 are spending, are getting an increase to spend $8,399. And the voucher high schools are increasing to $9,045.
No, that's the current funding. They're increasing to the second line.
Oh, the second line?
They're increasing to.
Oh, okay. I can't quite see that line as well, but it's close. So, so K-8 is 9,961 and 912 is 12,400. So their high school voucher students are, it's costing almost, you know, just a little bit more than it's costing us here in Greendale, 12,491. Or we're, I mean, it's close. It's comparable.
And that, and that certainly would get into a broader discussion of requirements on different school entities. So for a voucher program, there are many students that have special needs that are being served. But it isn't any student that would come through the doors is automatically entitled to programming through those voucher schools as a public school would have. And we do know that the district covers about two-thirds of the cost of special education through general operating funds. So these are not things that, from my perspective as the business manager, look at them as equal if you're talking about program delivery. But I know that there's, I'm not trying to get into that discussion. And I know there's a lot to it.
Yep.
But they aren't necessarily like, for like, what I'm trying to point out is the board had asked for an $1,107 increase. And there definitely are segments of the school, private school voucher program that are seeing that level and more. And that was what the board had advocated was reasonable to provide programming for next year.
Right. So we got about half over two years of what we were asking for.
Less than half, right?
Less than half, yeah.
And I, I mean, I'm, I'm just pointing out the facts. Obviously, they were, they were trying to balance the per, this current legislature and this, with this budget, they were trying to even out the amount of money. Whether, I know the, the programming is completely different between a public school and a private school. But when it comes down to actual cost per pupil, they were trying, they, it appears that there was an attempt to balance that.
That, that's a good observation. The, the piece that stands out, why we wanted to show it, is the open enrollment payments then did not follow that trend. And so you would have expected more significant change to the rate. And at this point, we haven't seen that for open enrollment payments. So there is some divergence there.
I think it was nice the way you set things up, always saying, here are the priorities. And I think we see the priorities from Madison, you know, pretty clearly.
So as we're presenting a budget that you'll need to take action on, we'll give you a little bit more information here so that you know what you're approving.
So one of those scenarios that we had provided in April of 2023, we were at 1.745 million. That was with an assumption of 6% increase to salaries and certain revenues coming in. The updated projection, if we were at a 6% salary increase after budgetary refinements that we have made to the budget, we would be at 1.263 million for a deficit and at 4% 846,692. And so at this point, the budget that we've brought forward is planning for a 4% increase to salaries. And to do that, we know that would take us into about an $850,000 deficit. Open enrollment acceptances, this is as of 6/2. I can tell you because we've updated this as of today, we are now at 50 seats that have been filled. And so we continue to monitor that. The board approved seats were at 79. And we had 56 seats needed to fill our budgetary assumptions. So we just wanted to give the board the update because that would be another piece of the budget if we had a significant variance from that. But we anticipate getting to our budgetary projection or slightly above that number.
So you said we're at 50 right now?
Correct.
And 56?
And we need 56 to hit budget.
Okay. Deadline, there is, is there any deadline for that?
The initial deadline is June 30th.
Okay.
So we've been following up with families we haven't heard of that initially got letters. And then we'll go through the process over the coming weeks of pulling new applications of families that are on wait lists, where those exist for those grade levels. And then, you know, full call, sending the letter to those families, inviting them in so that we can fill some of those remaining seats.
And it is hard set that the seats that we approve, so say there's a family that has someone eligible in one grade, but there's not an open seat at another grade, it's just going to be the student with the opening that would be accepted.
Yes. And I've had a couple conversations with parents this week that were mulling what to do based on that situation. We provide them all the facts of that, and then that's, you know, that's a personal family decision, what to do if you have one in or out, and there's a lot of factors in it. But we can't provide both seats if only one actually qualifies to be accepted. The parent would have to choose to take what's being offered by that timeline that they have to take the seat.
Thank you.
So with that budget and that amount, we said we've refined the budget. So we just want to highlight some of the things that we are building in, either projects that we are holding on or additional costs that we are carrying that don't fit within the budget. We're making, making ongoing annual payments to have some perspective on that. So when we look at our technology and buildings and grounds department, we have investments that we would like to make on our IT CAT 6 cabling. So the IT cables that go from network closets to access points that are in the building. And we had tagged for this year, making an investment of additional 65,000 in that and 22,000 for fiber lines that go to those tech closets. And just based on the realities of the current situation, that's maintenance that we will defer. And then from the buildings and grounds department, we're utilizing our tool, facility prioritization. But we've got investments in flooring at our middle school and exterior door replacements. And then roofing at the middle school, we are delaying those three projects, which would be about a quarter of a million dollars, based on limitations that we have within the budget and being able to fund those and prioritizing other projects. But those are items that will come up as the years go on, that we've deferred those here. And then kind of loans and other liabilities that exist under the revenue limit. So we've got two leases. So we're making annual payments on both Chromebooks, which were just renewed, and our district wireless. We talked to the board at our recent meeting to get approved for a proposed state trust fund loan to invest in the CKLA curriculum and the K-8 reset program. We have about $900,000 still in future cash payments that we will make through our Fund 73 OPEB trust. And so we're making annual contributions as those staff members retire and they're eligible for benefits. And then we have two remaining debt issues under the revenue limit. So one was to exceed the revenue cap to do energy efficiency projects. So there's $585,000 remaining, and that's at its end. And then we have a couple of years left of the Wisconsin retirement system refinance, which is just over a million dollars. So with the next principal payment we make, that will go under a million dollars this next year. So just pointing out some of those other liabilities that we have as a district. Public policy priorities, so the board has worked actively to collaborate with local legislators and local school districts to tell our story and communicate on the need for increased spendable revenue. And, you know, we've shared some of the results of that in terms of the funding that's coming through the next biennial budget. We've talked as a board about the investment of the SIR funding and that split between investment and academic educational recovery, as well as improvement of indoor air quality, HVAC within the district and projects we've taken on there. And so then that gets to tax levy and mill rate. We, as a district, about matched our 2011-12 overall school tax levy, so just over 16 million back in 2019-20. And that was the first year the 2018 referendum was on the tax bill. And that just about matched the 2011-12 overall school tax levy. And since then, we've had some small incremental decreases to that overall tax levy that have accumulated about half a million dollars. So as a school board, what is currently being taxed as a school tax levy is less than what was taxed in the 2011-12 school year. And then total mill rate is dependent on local property valuation increases. We know there was substantial increase to property valuation for the 22-23 year, and that's now at $9.01. So what we anticipate for the 23-24 school tax levy is remaining flat at 15,336,000. And then based on an estimate of what property valuation may increase for this next year, the mill rate being at $8.74 from 901 this last year. Important conversation that we have when we're having talks within the community is what are you doing to be efficient in resources and save for the school district? So we're utilizing cooperative agreements, state contracts, trying to be efficient with all of our purchasing within the school district. We're sharing services with the Village of Greendale. So beyond just our IT director partnership, we're working together on the concrete project at the middle school this summer. We're working collaboratively together on the Park and Recreation Ad Hoc Committee and sharing resources back and forth with each other. And so it's a close relationship, and we're talking about how we can be efficient with resources to save, be effective with resources that are coming from our taxing community. We share services with the Franklin School District for fiber lines, and that provides low-cost, high-speed internet access across our school district. We recently also partnered with Franklin School District to be able to do custodial training jointly. And so efficiencies and being able to leverage some expertise of experts in that area and have those two school districts share some of their own expertise amongst each other. So those types of partnerships are great whenever we can do them because there was no additional cost to our school district. We just had our custodial maintenance staff go and attend that joint training over at Franklin Schools, and we planned that out. We've switched and gone to self-funding our health insurance, so doing what we can to curb the trend. Going to self-funded health insurance has provided a lot of incentive to go to direct contracting, which we've been effective with, both with our nurse practitioner onsite, near-site health services through freighter fast care, diagnostic imaging, x-rays, CT scan with MDI. We can save thousands of dollars on getting an MRI scan by being effective there. And we continue to talk about more and more and more that we can do to be as efficient as possible to try and sustain that our health insurance benefit levels within the resources that we have available. We've worked on prepaying and refinancing of debt. So the board approved additional defisence in this school year for Fund 39 debt and has the ability now to avoid interest payments in the future. And we've also refinanced debt at extremely low levels. You recall in March of 2022, before interest rates went up, we were refinancing at about 1% interest, and now, you know, 5% to 7% interest rates are common. And so we've tried to take advantage of those situations as they've provided themselves. And then, as I mentioned, future planning with the village around the Park and Recreation Committee. So we want our community members to know that we value the trust that they have in us being good fiduciaries, and we are totally open to thinking outside the box and collaborating and being efficient if it means that that can help us sustain programming. And then we've got some notes on additional discussions and action steps. We'll have our annual meeting in September and then board approval of the budget in October. And with that, we'd be happy to take any questions the board has.
Okay. So any questions for Jonathan?
Could you go back to that slide with the timeline?
Yeah.
So we're approving a preliminary, you're asking us to approve this preliminary budget, but there's an $800,000 deficit. Do we, I'm assuming you have some ideas on how to tighten that belt? Are we just going to be operating at a deficit or?
We will be operating at a deficit, and that deficit will come out of our fund balance. As you're aware, we have a $7.2 million fund balance, which is deceiving on account of the fact that the fund balance is taken on June 30th, but our tax revenues do not come in until most of them in January. And so therefore, we use our fund balance for cash flow purposes for the first half of the school year, but we do have 7.2 million. We believe we're able to use that 800,000 from fund balance and sustain purchases, but we will be right up against the wall. And there could be a possibility that we would have to short-term borrow or hold some payments until tax revenues come in. So we are recommending a budget that's a shortfall because we need to determine, we were waiting on account of the fact that the state legislature had not approved final budgets. We have committed to contracts anticipating that there be some action here. There is, where the state budget projections are coming in, it does leave us at a deficit. And so we will need to have some conversations over the course of the next year because that is not sustainable, but it is a one-year patch while we discuss sustainable options over the course of the next year. So the action that we're looking to take tonight is to approve the preliminary budget that is in the memo that has all of it. And you're correct, Mary, that there is a budget shortfall that we are recommending be, we use fund balance to carry us for one year while we determine sustainable options for future years.
The other alternative would be to cut $800,000 out of the budget, which obviously nobody would like to do at this point in time.
And we are at a point where we have committed contracts, and so therefore, it would not be as easy as, easily done.
Especially in, it's almost, you know, July 1st. I do want to thank you, though. I know we started with, what was it, 1.2 million?
1.7.
1.7 million dollars deficit. So you, you know, cut that below, you know, cut that in, what is it, less than half? So that was something to applaud. So thank you for that. I'm sure that wasn't easy either.
Anything else?
I want to thank you too, Jonathan, for all of the work and Dr. Midsak for all the work that goes into this. Obviously, these are not easy times we're in, and I'm saddened that our state lawmakers didn't necessarily come through the way we would have liked them to, despite that they heard extremely good testimony from across the state for the need for public schools. And I do not believe we by any means are the only school district that is looking at this possible deficit for this year.
So we're looking for a motion to approve tonight?
Yes. A motion to approve the preliminary budget. You don't have a green sheet tonight, do you?
We do, actually. She put one on the back.
There you go. That's the administration's recommended motion.
So any other questions? If not, I will be looking for a motion to approve the preliminary budget for the 2023-24 school year as outlined in Agenda Item 1.
I move approval of the preliminary budget for the 23-24 school year as outlined in Agenda Item 1.
A second.
So we do have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary budget for the 2023-24 school year. Any further discussion or questions? If not, we'll take a roll call.
Yes.
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 And I'm yes, motion does carry. Thank you again, Mr. Mitchell, for that.
Thank you.
And obviously, I know you'll be keeping us posted as things come along here. We are on to the last section of citizen comments, and I see none tonight. So we are going to adjourn. Our next school board meeting is scheduled for July 17th at 7:00. We do need to motion to go in.
No, it's not a closed session.
We're posted, that's right. We will be going...
It's open, and it is professional learning for the board.
Yes. So we will be going into our board retreat at the district office, which is publicly posted and open if anyone wants to learn about that. So with that, we'll see you guys downstairs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need us to bring all this stuff down?
Nope.
We can just head over there to the district office.